Forget to plug mine in.
I'd like to welcome you all to our March Board meeting and call this meeting to order and take roll call. Mr. Paul Wyatt.
Here.
Mrs. Boyer, here. Mrs. Schultz, here. Mr. Larson.
Here.
And Mr., I mean, I'll lead the pledge. If you're able, please stand, followed by the invocation given by Mr. Wyatt.
Pardons to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we humbly bow our heads this evening and give Thee thanks for our many blessings. We're so grateful that we have the opportunity to be here at this meeting to talk about children and talk about the important things in our school district. We're thankful for Thy guidance and for everything that people in this district do, for the staff and the teachers and those that work very hard. We ask that Thou would bless them and be with us this night as we discuss things that are important, that we may make correct decisions and do what Thou would have us do. In this we do, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Ask for approval of the agenda.
Motion.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.1, approval of meeting minutes for January 12th and January 23rd.
I'll make motion to approve as presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 6.1, ratification of expense and payroll vouchers, tax credits, and activity accounts. Anyone have any questions for Mrs. Beecraft?
I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. No call to the audience, Nikki? No? Item 8.1, recognition of our basketball team. Congratulations, ladies. Want to come up? Your coaches?
All right. Well, thanks for inviting us. I'm really excited to just tell you how well they did this year, if you haven't already heard. So first things first, we beat a bunch of teams that we haven't beaten in like 20 some years. So that was exciting. And then they won the 3A East Region, which hasn't been done since 1986. And then we went all the way to the finals in state and we lost in the championship, but that has never been done in the history of Sholo High School. So they broke a lot of barriers and, you know, just kind of really made a mark in history in the school and in the community. And community's been super supportive. Parents are super supportive. We wanted to show our hardware. We had six girls that were recognized in all region and then we had three that were recognized in all conference. So just super proud of them. And it was a group effort. And I don't know what else I'm supposed to say, but they're just awesome and we're glad that you wanted to recognize them tonight.
It was fun to watch you guys all season. It was fun to watch you guys all season, get all the way to state. It was crazy. We need some fan buses next year when you.
I agree. I agree. Let's do it. Because this is the new standard, the new tradition, I hope. So we plan on going back and it would be nice to have. We had a lot of fans, but, you know, I'll just say had a lot more. Fan buses would be awesome.
That was kind of crazy.
Can we, can we, can we get names?
Yeah, go for it, girls.
And then before you all go sit down, come up here and say hi.
Yeah, and then can we get a picture?
Yeah, we'll get a picture and everything.
Yeah, maybe your name and what grade. How about that?
I'm Raquel Wilson and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Jordan Boyce and I'm a freshman.
I'm Cindy Stoll and I'm a junior.
I'm Sadie Hall and I'm a senior.
I'm Aubrey Wilson and I'm a junior.
I'm Amber Lynn Lindsay and I'm a junior.
I'm Alex Swanson and I'm a senior.
I'm Grace Moore. I'm a junior.
I'm Addison Calderman. I'm a senior.
I'm Tana Moore and I'm a freshman.
I'm Mackenzie Coolish and I'm a junior.
I'm Jaylee Boyce and I'm a freshman.
Underclassmen. Lots of underclassmen.
Jackie Tinkle and Dave Moore were your sisters, right, Chris?
Yep, yep.
So we're gonna get a picture there. So congratulations, guys. Thanks for coming down.
You guys want to line up here with your trophy? We'll stand up here. Coaches, you want to get up here? Come on, coaches.
Get in a little bit closer. All right, one, two, three. All right. Thank you.
Come on and give him a fist bump.
Oh, give him a fist bump.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You did us proud.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Way to go.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congrats. Hey, thank you for everything.
Way to go, coach. Good job.
Way to go, coach. Thank you.
Nice job. Way to go.
Congrats.
Way to go.
Good. Congrats.
Red flag.
Boys? Coach? Hi, I'm James Simmons. I'm the varsity boys basketball coach. Just finished my first year in a transition year. As you guys probably know from last year, they had several seniors. So we're very young this year, just like the girls were. But we made a lot of strides, made the playoffs. Unfortunately, we lost in the first round of the snowflake. But I think we're going to be a lot better next year as we move forward. We had four seniors. Unfortunately, two of them weren't able to make it. Noah Anderson and Mark Jewett. Noah was in his first year as a varsity player. Mark was in his second or third, I believe. I do have two others. Luke Morrow, who was a senior. It was his second year on varsity. And Jason Crawford, the senior. He was his first year on varsity as well. And then over here is Preston Power, who's a junior. He was first team all-region in our 3A region. Luke was second team all-region. And Mark and Jason were both honorable mention. So we got four students on, being recognized in our, in our region. So we, again, we appreciate you guys, the offer of coming up and, and being, being able to talk about, you know, our season and our players and giving some recognition to our players. Let them introduce themselves and say hi.
I'm Jason Crawford.
Luke Morrow.
I'm hi.
Preston Power. All right, I'm assuming we can say hi to the board. We can go around as well. Lily, we're gonna get a picture and.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Congratulations for getting.
Okay, let's start with.
Good job, guys.
I enjoyed watching you guys.
Good job. You make us proud. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Hey, thanks, Coach.
Quick picture, Bill. Tell us.
We'll all squeeze in and take a picture here. Oh, man, he's still in my face. Give me the short guy.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming to see us. I know.
It's so funny. I didn't expect that.
Hey, Mr. St. John, Superintendent report?
Yes, I thought I'd start with the snow days update. I hope you're pretty familiar with that, but I can certainly go through it with you more if you need to. I did share a couple of letters that went out to parents and staff too, of course. We have had nine of them. I just hope I didn't jinx this. But so hopefully nine is enough. But we've, we have kind of figured out how to handle those. It was definitely messy. Kind of my fault. It was a bit wishy-washy at the beginning. Again, that would be my fault. But now I think we're really kind of on track. So I don't know if you have any questions on how we're handling that, but essentially if we have a snow day, a good, most of our, all of our certified and a chunk of our classified can stay home. And then we try to have them do work. The classified are even on call. And so that just works so well for them, just from a payroll point of view, from, and they can get a lot of work done. So it doesn't work quite as well for the classified that are only on 144 and a half, you know, only come on the students because they can lose out. However, I think in the future, what we're going to do, and again, I hope it's the future, so not this year anymore, but as far as snow days go, we're going to just say, hey, that Friday, the Friday of that week. And so then unless there's just something on that Friday, like maybe we have a big professional development thing, you might have to push it off for another week. But that still might, if we're lucky, fall in within their normal two-week pay period. But it would just kind of keep everybody on, with the rhythm that we kind of want to have.
Yeah. Last, when we've been on site visits, we've been asking them how they liked that idea and everyone seemed to like it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, honestly, my payroll clerk, I mean, it's been tough on her because there's a lot of, so that's the unfortunate part.
And it'd be better for the kids to have the stability and have the instructional days earlier, right?
Oh, to keep the, yeah, absolutely. So I went to, I kind of should do a shout out real quick to all the music too, because I went to the concerts and the festivals going on. And they've lost nine days. So as good as they were, and I'm telling you, there was a junior high song called Dance Your Dance, which is really cool. I mean, it's beautiful, beautiful song. I've never heard it before. And I mean, I would, I would record that and put it on my, my song list for sure. It's just amazing. But they did that with, you know, that's a lot of time. Nine days is a ton of time. So to do as well as they did and with the superior ratings and things that they were getting by the adjudicators was very impressive. Yeah. So I don't know if you have any other questions in regards to the snow days? I was asked by Aaron Durbin, who is our, our head teacher and takes care of WMI, to share with you a change that they would like to have. It's a curriculum change, although it's an interesting curriculum to me because it's more of almost like a software. So they want to go from our current software that we use to Edmentum, when if you read her narrative in there, it's just more active, interactive. It does a better job of kind of making sure our students are engaged. And so it's just really good things. And it's essentially, I don't know, Aaron, if I put it in here or not, but it's almost, it might even be a little cheaper. So really a good thing for the district. But of course, we do have to abide by the law. And this is actually more so, I would have normally just brought this to you after the 60-day, you know, advertisement and getting it out to the public so they can look at it. But this is a little over, even over that, to make sure that you guys know and really that our community knows, if they're interested and want to look at the change and what Edmentum is all about, then this, this is just kind of bringing that to light a little bit more. That's a good thing. The teachers' and land update, if you recall that you guys had asked that I would speak with Bruce Ironside. And so I did that. And to see if that land up at Sholo Plus is, was still kind of set aside for the school district. It is not. That had a limit, like a five-year limit. However, there is still a lot of land up there. And so I, we're going to continue to talk. In fact, I got a text from him just the other day and said, hey, I got some more interesting information in regards to some potential for this, the school district that might be interested in in regards to that land up there. So I haven't contacted him as of yet. Actually, just sent him, I sent him my number back and he didn't call me back either. So I think he's pretty busy. But in terms of what you had asked to look into, that land is not set aside specifically for the school district anymore. However, there's still a lot of land up there. Not sure what it costs. I'm sure it's pretty spendy. And you know, it's beautiful land. It's, to me, that looks like real good land that would, if the district could somehow achieve owning it, it would be, it would be good land for us to have. Maintenance update. When I first sent out my report to you guys, I really had the update in regards to the unfortunate mishap with the pipe breaking near the wrestling room, which of course got onto the gym floor and again ruined a bit of the gym floor, not all of it. So that's about the third time, although I was talking to the, the insurance fellow with the trust that works with us quite a bit, he said, well, there was another school district down here that did the same thing. They've lost there. And it's a huge facility and have lost their gym floor three times in the last four or five years. Similar type of stuff going on. In my mind, again, though, for us, the unfortunate part of this is that pipe. I'm not, I just feel like it shouldn't have happened because it, you know, water pipes should have some heat. But as you know, last year and a half at least, we have a sort of a makeshift heating system in the high school. And so the individual that put that in there to get us what's going on with our HVAC, so really kind of failed to make sure that the heat was also getting up there. Unfortunately, we didn't think of it either. And that was at minus three-degree day. And so there was actually kind of a number of different pipes that I guess broke throughout the city here. But that's very expensive, you know. And so in that HVAC, I thought should have been done. I did get a report because I'm always asking Director West about these things, that there's, the HVAC should be out of there sometime in April. So we actually be back on our normal heating system. It was a little late in regards to that situation with the pipe breaking. We actually had two in the school. So I updated my report too, so you can read some of that on, on regards to the facilities. But we do have to fix about a third of the gym floor because of that. So in regards to some of the extra stuff, as I said, the HVAC should be completed and working in the high school by about April 30th. You may have noticed, probably did notice, the partial part of the gym, the roof has been replaced where it's green, which we like the green. But they're not far from completed. They left, when it starts snowing, they just kind of left. But they're supposed to be back now on the 13th. And so that should get completed throughout the spring and summer and be done by about September, as far as the roofing goes. In other news, we have ordered 12 new outer doors for the auditorium, the lower level part of the auditorium. So that'll be good in terms of security for the auditorium. They also ordered some doors for the entrance into the high school at the gymnasium entrance. Those doors aren't very good. So we're getting those replaced. There's some other work that's being done on the auditorium. They're changing out the lights. They have a ton of lights that have been out in there, which would really upset our counselors because we do a lot of our testing in there. And the lights aren't very good. So that's getting done this week. Plus, it's been bugging me since I've been here. There's a little balloon string that's hanging up there, so I'm hoping they'll get that. That'll be a huge achievement. The A and B halls and the boys and girls bathrooms, all the stalls, painting and flooring in the high school restroom has been repaired. The new conference room has been built. It's not quite done, but it's getting close. It's got its carpet in there, which is a big deal for the high school administration. We're still working on the claim for, for the flooding that we did have when those pipes broke. So I don't have any specific news on what, how that's going to go yet, but we're working on that. I think that's kind of most of it, as far as kind of what's going on, as far as facilities. And then the food service outsourced effort that we're putting in, the RFB, has been approved by ADE. And so now we're just in the process of advertising and should be choosing a company for, to be able to recommend to you guys. I'm, we're hopeful at our April meeting.
Any questions?
No.
Item 9.1, Marquee Project, Mr. St. John.
Okay. So the marquees, which I think are a huge improvement and a good way to communicate, not everybody necessarily agrees with that. But when you talk to a lot of people, they think that we can communicate and not just communicate, but celebrate and share some different information with our, our families. And so it involves four different marquees. And the reason there's only four, although you can see they're very expensive, about a quarter of a million dollars, thereabouts, because I'm not entirely sure. I haven't got the exact quote on the electrical part of it. But I have, I think, a pretty decent guess there. There will be one that will go out at Linden, one for Nicholas. That's a little problematic because there's not very much room at Nicholas. And we have that brick foundation thing there. So I don't know if that's strong enough. They still have to test that. If we could just put it kind of on there, then that would change. There are pictures for you to see as well. Or if we just want to remove that and, you know, put the new marquee in. But there's not really any other place at Nicholas. Even Linden is actually pretty restrictive. And so we're going to put, the one that's currently there is kind of hard to see. And it's not, it's not observable at all from, from the parking lot. And so we're gonna, we want to move it over just a little bit and turn it, kind of trick it a little bit, so it can be seen very well, I guess, coming out from Sholo and can also be seen for anybody that comes in into, into, towards it, to the school, the park or whatever, when they're coming in or to let their kids off, so they'll be able to see it. And then the one for Whipple, which is pretty easy just to replace the other one, other than instead of facing the one direction, should be faced the other direction, so you can see it coming up, up and down the highway. And then for the junior high and high school, again, there's a pretty good one for the junior high. I suppose we could just replace the current one that is there that has the stone base. But there just isn't a good place for the high school. And so we're already wired for it. And so having talked with the high school principal at both schools, it would make sense if they shared that. And we just put it kind of outside of the new business, the new business office. So I think it's a good deal. It's kind of spendy. These are really cool marquees, though. You could watch movies on them. They're not just, you could put pictures, you can do a ton of things with them and share a lot of information with them. Honestly, my biggest worry, it's kind of weird. In Arizona, there's actually good for us because we can kind of put things like that up there. And, but we want to be really good neighbors. I'm going to work very closely with the city and send out some letters to the people in that neighborhood. And we probably might even turn ours down or off at a certain time in the evening. You know, just, just whatever. You just want to make sure that the marquee isn't, the lights and those kinds of things aren't, you make everybody aware of it and talk to them about their concerns. So we will go through that process. So. But it is a pretty spendy thing. But it's, it's our Esser funds that would pay for this project.
And it qualifies under Esser?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Communication.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you want to reach out to our neighbors and, and to be, you know, I don't know, neighborly to them and get input and advise them. So, thank you.
Any more questions or do you guys want to move on this? This is something all the administrators want to do and they're part of, and they want this. And.
I believe so. I mean, I've asked them and yeah, I think they're excited about it.
I'll mention that I think if we don't do it, these are too expensive for like PTSOs to try and do.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, they have other things to spend their money on and that would be way too expensive for them to do. And it probably would be hard to do one school at a time. You know, if we didn't do it and it was each school up to themselves, it probably wouldn't happen. That's, that's a lot of money for PTSO to try and raise. And I can't think of how else that it would happen. So. Glad to see the warranty information because that was one of the questions I had was, what when it, what, what happens when it breaks, which it inevitably will because things are get so complicated and then they break easier. So I'm glad to see they're, have a warranty for a little while at least.
I was kind of on the fence with the marquees only because I felt like maybe we were taking money from somewhere else where it could have been, you know, applied towards. But if everybody's in agreement and this is what our administrators want to do, I'll make motion to approve.
I think I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion passes. Item 9.2, 2021 Audit, Mrs. Beecraft.
Okay, so for the 2021 audit, it's been long coming. I just wanted to, everyone got the packet that the auditors sent. It's been sent by email. It's on the agenda. It's available to the public if they're interested. So overall, actually, the 2021 audit looks good. It is a drastic improvement from the year prior. Overall findings, the 2020 audit, we had 84, which is very high. The 2021 audit is a reduction overall to 51. So that's 33 findings, which is almost 40% reduction in a year, which is really good, in my opinion. A lot of it, we went over in great detail, the findings and all the information. A lot of it is just processes and paperwork. A lot of processes, a lot of paperwork. Even if they sample a size of 50 transactions, if you miss one, then it's, it's, it's a no for the section. So it is a high standard, but we are working. We're doing more training. We hired the additional staff member. It's been fantastic. She's going to make a tremendous difference in the success of the audit. Just to note, probably the biggest thing that the auditors complimented the district on was we didn't overexpend any budget. So that's kind of the big no-no in the rule of finance. So we did not do that. So overall, I feel it's a positive. It's a step in the right direction. And the district's total net position increased a little over $2 million or 14%. So financially, on the back end, it's a big step forward for the district, even though it's kind of a black eye with some of the findings. We are cleaning them up. We're in the process right now of finalizing the 22 audit. I think we're the only district that I know of that's done three in a year. So we're a little tired, but I'm optimistic that the 22 audit will look even better. So each one of you have the packet. If you have questions, anybody has questions, they can reach out to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Very much. I know you guys have had to work really hard and diligently and, and so thank you.
Anyone have any specific questions about the audit? I know we had a study session about it.
Yeah, ask my questions then.
Yeah? Okay, then this is different. We need to take a roll call to accept the audit. Mr. Larson, do you accept the audit?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz, do you accept the audit?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyer, do you accept the audit?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt, do you accept the audit?
Yes.
I accept the audit. Thanks, Vanessa. Item 9.3, Classified Personnel, for your approval, new hires, resignations, and terminations.
So I've, I've been asking to have a meeting for two or three weeks now about at least one specific person on here and it hasn't happened. I still feel like we need to have that meeting. And until we do, I would like to remove that name from this list. So I'm okay to motion to approve with removing, removing the one name under termination.
Were you able to go into any kind of executive session?
I'd like to make motion to go into an executive session for personnel matter.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
entertain a motion to move out of executive session?
So motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 9.3, Classified Personnel, for your approval, new, new employment, terminations, and resignations, and substitutes.
I move to approve all the classified employee actions as presented by administration.
Are second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Larson? Item 9.4, Certified Personnel. For your approval.
I'll make motion to approve as presented.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 9.5, Activity Personnel, for your approval.
I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 9.6, Linden Elementary Principal, Mr. St. John.
Is my narrative on your guys' report? Super. Because it's not on mine. But there was a committee of eight different people made up with our elementary principals and teachers. and teachers and a parent. They interviewed five different high, high-quality candidates, actually all in-house, so that's kind of awesome. And the recommendation from the committee is to hire Ms. Candice LeBoutte as the new principal for Linden Elementary for 2324.
And is she here?
She is.
Monica, you guys want to make a motion first, or do you want to congratulate her now?
A motion to approve as presented.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Do you want to come up here, Ms. LeBoutte? You're a teacher at the junior high right now, right?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for approving me. I'm very, very, very excited. I hear it's a, a family, so I'm excited to join the family, so.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We're glad to have you. Thank you. Item 9.7, administrative salaries for the 2324 school year. Mr. St. John or Vanessa, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I can talk about it. Vanessa, look, we definitely have a budget for it, or I wouldn't put it on there without getting approval from our business manager. I know we talked about this at our last work session. I have a little vibe that you might have some heartburn there a little bit, and, and so I would advise it's not a bad idea to have another work session if that would help the board. I personally obviously like that, or I wouldn't put it on there, and I would certainly recommend it and like your approval, but these are things that are difficult for different reasons. So I don't know what else I can say about it. You can see where my philosophy is, where those numbers come from. There's a lot of different philosophies, a lot of different rationales that you could use to come up with those different numbers. I was just, while you were in executive session, was talking with Nikki about that a little bit, our HR director here, that, that there's a lot of, this doesn't really incorporate experience. It doesn't incorporate, really, it's not performance-based, it's not schooling-based or education-based. It's really about trying to do the best we can with our current personnel that we have, and it's about, from a management and administrator's point of view, it's about replacing, because we're all going to be replaced sooner or later. And so in a way, the budgets are, school budgets are financed, how the revenues come in, it's fairly rigid, and we, we don't really have that kind of flexibility that you might have in the business world. So you really do need to kind of come up with numbers of what can we afford, doing the best we can to pay our teachers, to pay our custodians, cooks, you know, most schools are pretty similar that way. We have a similar look. Some have a little more, you know, a little more IT, or they might have a little more in one area, area than another. But in the end, there is only so much budget, and that's the thing that we're working on even with new positions, if there's things that we can have, because we have some needs, desires, some things that we think would be valuable, but we have to make sure we have the money. So that's where those numbers come from.
I have a few things on here. I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and I appreciate that the numbers are going in the right direction, because I think it really needs to happen. There's a few things I would probably like to have discussions about and maybe tweak, if the other board members would also be open to those discussions. There's a couple of things that I think maybe I would like to see a little different, and I'd like to see what the other board members think, and see if we can come to a consensus. So I would prefer to table this.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and have a study session before the next meeting, so that it can be fleshed out a little more.
I'll plan for one on the last week of March, if that will work.
I'll make motion to table this until further discussion at a special meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Item 9.8, 22, 2324 certified salaries, Mr. St. John.
Yeah, so again, working real closely with the business manager, trying to do the best we can with our, for our teachers, anticipating a little bit what the legislature is going to do for us as well, but we have a strong budget, so Vanessa's done an amazing job in that regard. And so we're, we feel like we're able to offer something that's not that common, which is up to 4%. I think two is, and even a little less, has probably been the average over my 20-some years. Different state, but 4% is, is a, is a strong percentage. But then again, if you read the narrative, I have to temper that a little bit, because I, we all know what's going on, just inflation in, in the country, and even just our housing situation. So I, I'm like, really happy about the 4%, and yet I'm...
Wish it could be more, of course.
It's just, it's unfortunate, it's really, I think we're still losing money, so it's very frustrating. So, and we're hopeful, I think Vanessa might be able to speak to this too, that our healthcare, though, I think is going to be about 5% and that we can, you know, cover that as well. So we're doing well as a district, we just can't keep up with the economy in general, but...
I move to approve a 4% certified salary increase for 2324.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Any further discussion? Motion passes. Item 9.9, classified level placement chart, Mrs. Beecroft. Is this just to show the minimum wage increase, bump everybody up, or...
Yeah, just how that plays out, and this is going to be for the 2324 school year. Will be on the website for positions that start after July 1.
I was wondering if this is something that we could also table until we have our special session concerning the administrative salaries. I, I just have a few concerns there, and I'm hoping maybe we can do a little better. And so I was just wondering if everybody would be okay with tabling that for right now.
Absolutely. That's not, it doesn't go into effect until July 1st anyway.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I'll make motion to table this item until we can have a study session.
Okay. All in favor?
I'll need a second.
I'll second. Everyone in favor of that?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Item 9, 9.10, ELL curriculum work off contract pay, Mr. St. John.
That, that narrative that comes from Mrs. Ramsey, I don't know if I can tell you much more about it, other than it's just, there's some work that needs to be done in the, with the ELL, and it's, it's outside of normal contract work, so it certainly is a sensible thing to do.
I'll make motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Item 9.11, new positions for 2324. Is this just a discussion?
Correct. You know, I, I left that on the agenda uncertain, so we, we did get the packet out fairly early, and I thought there might be, actually, I originally did have one item on there, and I just wanted to leave it on there just in case we were able to come up with a number and maybe have some recommendation for you guys to approve. That didn't happen, so it is a moot agenda item. But for sure, we'll want to have that, I'm hoping, to have that if the money is available in the budget for you to approve some positions potentially that, that you're aware of from our last work session in our April meeting. But that'll be something too, that hopefully, I might have that information when we have our work session.
That'd be great.
And I'm planning a work session within April too, because we have a lot to talk about and the transition of policies.
I think we need a lot of work sessions right, right around this time of year, yeah.
Yeah. So sorry about taking a lot of your time, but I need you to be, you know, informed about all the...
Would rather take the time than make uninformed decisions, so thank you.
Item 9.12, auto state, state field trips for your approval. I make motion to approve the Disneyland trip.
I want to go.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?